Thank you for coming. I want to first introduce our rabbi, Rabbi Amy Hertz, who's going to speak to you first, and then you'll hear from me.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Hertz. I am one of the rabbis of Temple Emanuel. Welcome to Temple Emanuel. We are the oldest synagogue in Greensboro, founded well over 100 years ago in 1907. The building you are in designed to house the many functions of our Jewish community was also built to house civic gatherings, such as the one we are honored to host tonight. This congregation is part of Judaism's Reform Movement. For centuries, we have been the voice of informed choice. Informed choice is how we approach our religious commitments. Informed choice in civic affairs is truly at the heart of tonight's forum. I bring greetings as well from my colleague Rabbi Andy Koren, who many of you know, who is participating in the Greensboro Jewish Federation Mission to Israel, and he sends his blessings to everyone. With tremendous gratitude to all who made tonight possible, let me again welcome you to our program as it begins shortly.
Okay, can you hear me? Terrific. Welcome to AAUW and Temple Emanuel's Social Action Committee 2025, City Council Mayor and at-large forum. Thank you for coming. This year, Temple Emanuel's Social Action Committee has partnered again with the Carolina Peacemakers for Press Coverage and the AAUW, the American Association of University Women, to bring you this nonpartisan mayor and at-large forum. This is being recorded and live streamed on Facebook at facebook/TEGreensboro and will remain on the Facebook page through the election if you want to share it, and also on YouTube. I'm Catherine Magid, the Public Policy Chair for both Temple Emanuel and AAUW. This election is very important this year. The Greensboro City Council's elections are every four years. This year, five of the city council's nine members aren't running for their seat. And for the first time in 10 years, they aren't seeking reelection or the same seat. For this change, over 50% will be new members, so it's very important to vote. Only 10% of Greensboro citizens actually voted in the primary, so tell everyone you know to go. Decisions made by these new city council members will affect your life on a daily basis, and from how they pick up your leaves to meeting our housing needs with the road to 10,000 housing units built by 2030. So let's meet the candidates. When I call your name, will you stand up and wave or do whatever you would like? For mayor, the Honorable Mary Kay Abuziater, presently mayor pro tem of the city council, and the Honorable Robbie Perkins, former mayor of the city of Greensboro. Now, hold your applause through the next part, please, okay? In the at-large category, we have the Honorable Hugh Holston. At-large, we have Denise Roth. I know you're here. Okay, good. At-large, Richard Beard. At-large, the Honorable Jamila Pender. And so far, we have not seen Irving Allen or the Honorable Diane Bellamy Small. We'll keep you posted. Everyone was sent three emails. They were spoken to twice and received a text. Are there any elected officials in the audience that they haven't pointed out to me? I think... Oh, thank you, from my district, District 5, Tammy Thuram. Thank you for coming, Tammy. All right, so with that said, we're going to move on. And I'd especially like to thank two of the three women who have made this possible again this year, writing the questions, being the timekeepers, and arranging this evening in so many ways. They are quite remarkable, Heidi Fleishman and Mary Skeens. Our moderator tonight is Joe Stewart. He's sitting over here with the suspenders. Joe Stewart currently serves as Vice President of Governmental Affairs for the Independent Insurance Agents of North Carolina, the IIANC. Joe remains a media source for objective information and insights on North Carolina's dynamic political environment and has appeared as a guest political analyst for Capital Tonight on Spectrum TV, on the UNC TV's Front Row, and also State Lines, which was launched in 2023. Joe has 40 years of experience in government and politics, association management, issue advocacy campaigns, and fundraising in North Carolina and Washington, D.C. That's a lot to say. He's quite remarkable. And he's currently serving on the board of the nonpartisan campaign training organization, North Carolina Institute of Public Leadership, the IOPL. So let's welcome him. Thank you for coming. And now we're going to begin, and I'm going to read the rules of the forum. Let's see where they went to. I think they're in here. Yes. All right, give me a moment. My folder runneth over. Okay, so the rules of the forum. The moderator will explain the rules of the forum, and I'm doing it in his stead tonight. The mayoral and at-large candidate's forum will be approximately 90 minutes. The forum will be livestreamed on Temple Emanuel's Facebook page, which I mentioned, and also on youtube.com/TEGreensboro. The questions have been written by a group of Social Action Committee members and Greensboro residents. There will be no questions submitted by the audience. There will be no opening statement by the candidates. There will be no closing statement by the candidates. The candidates will have two minutes to respond. The questions will be asked of each of the two or three candidates. Occasionally, the candidates will have different questions. Each candidate has been advised of the final topic in advance because we like them to... Their time speaking to end on a high note. And the two mayoral candidates will come up to the stage, answer the questions first, followed by the at-large candidates in a group of three selected randomly before the forum. The timekeepers will be positioned, and they are in the front center of the audience, and will display signs indicating one minute, 30 seconds, and stop. If the candidates continue to speak, after the stop sign is displayed, the moderator will announce your time is up. And now I give you Joe Stewart.
Thank you very much. Could we have the two candidates for mayor come up and join us on stage? Please have a seat. The first question will give you an opportunity to talk about public safety. We'll go in alternating order. First, Mrs. Abuziater, I'm sorry if I've got the name wrong.
Abuziater.
Abuziater, thank you very much. The question is this: One of Greensboro's largest concerns is public safety, which includes crime and gun violence in general. On this Saturday night in downtown Greensboro, the police responded to two separate unrelated shootings on South Elm Street in the 500 block near Lewis Street, just before 10:30 p.m. and later in the 600 block. The victims were taken to the hospital with non-life-threatening injuries. Elaborate on the challenges and solutions for Greensboro public safety. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Public safety in Greensboro has come a long way. We have an amazing police chief who has taken great strides in improving the relationships between the community and our police officers. What you had over the weekend is we had thousands and thousands of visitors from other areas, and I was actually downtown until about 9:00, 9:15 that evening, enjoying everything that was going on for the homecoming festivities, and everything was amazing. But you're always going to have one or two people who decide that they want to cause a disruption. So actually, you know, it would be great if we could afford a police officer every two feet or every couple of yards, but that is impossible. What we try to do is make sure our community has a good relationship with the police department, and therefore, they will call when they see any interaction that looks like it's going to get out of hand. That has happened, and they have been very good on calling 911. We have told them, don't call the non-emergency, call 911 if you see an altercation start. And I truly believe that may have helped prevent a homicide this weekend instead of the altercations. Any altercation is unfortunate, but you know, you never can predict what human behavior is going to be. But our police department and our police are doing amazing things. We had the Bike Squad downtown. We had all of our police officers downtown, and thankfully, we have a full complement of police officers right now. I will say that, you know, a year and a half ago, we were short 120 officers, and I led the charge to get them an almost 20% raise across the board, and they have had recruiting, and we have people submitting applications all the time. So I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, I'll repeat the question. One of Greensboro's largest concerns is public safety, which includes crime and gun violence in general. On Saturday night in downtown Greensboro, the police responded to two separate unrelated shootings on South Elm Street in the 500 block near Lewis Street, just before 10:30 p.m. and later in the 600 block. The victims were taken to the hospital with non-life-threatening injuries. Elaborate on the challenges and solutions for Greensboro public safety. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much. In Greensboro, public safety is really a tale of two cities. Part of Greensboro wants the police to enforce more, and part of Greensboro is concerned, when they do enforce more, that they'll be treated differently, and profiling is a big concern. So somehow, strategically, we've got to convince our entire community that the police can be trusted and that they will treat all of our citizens fairly and equitably. You build trust in the police department, one relationship at a time. And you've heard the term "community policing," and we have to reinforce that. Now, over the last 10 years, I believe the council took its eye off the ball with regard to policing because by the time the police were given a 20% raise, we were 135 positions down. So if you're going to run a big organization, you need to manage that organization. You don't need to ignore it until it's a crisis. Also, the council has to respect the job that these police officers are doing. You've got to have their back, and you've got to make sure that when you have eight or 900,000 interactions with the citizens per year, that when an incident occurs, that it is transparent to all of our citizens, so everybody can view it. You don't need to put it in the drawer and hope it goes away because it won't.
All right, the next question for Mrs. Abuziater. This is specifically for you. Your campaign slogan is "Keep what's good in Greensboro and improve the rest." Can you give us an example of what's good in Greensboro and your thoughts on improving that idea?
So I think Greensboro has made amazing strides in the last several years. You know, we didn't just overnight get Jet Zero and Boom and Marshall Aerospace and Publix and all of the businesses that are pretty much knocking on the door of Greensboro. It's very exciting. It's an exciting time, and we have worked on this for years and years. I am running for mayor because I believe we need someone who has been in, on the ground in all of these discussions and works well and collaborates with our Chamber of Commerce, our Carolina Core. I am chair of several regional boards, and we have to think regionally. So we are good now, and we are getting greater every day, and we need to move into the future with someone who can help guide a brand-new council and has been there, seeing all of the innovative solutions, all of the things that are going on with not only council but in the community. You know, over the last 12 years, our community has made major strides. We honestly have done so much in bringing corporations here and making sure our infrastructure... My goodness, the urban loop has opened up thousands of acres that can be developed, all of those things. So we need to keep moving forward, and we don't need to take a step backwards and do what was done many, many years ago. We need to move forward and keep the momentum going. I keep saying, we are on a trajectory of success we have never seen before, and I don't want to see it stop, and I don't want it seen delayed one day because it doesn't matter. If you've been in the council, you know what's going on, and if you haven't, it's going to stop.
Right here? Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Perkins, coming to you on this. Your campaign slogan is "Creating a bold vision for Greensboro together." Please define "bold."
Bold is an essential ingredient in leadership, and in Greensboro, we need a leader as its mayor. I've been the mayor before, and I was the mayor in, from 2011 to 2013. And I got an invite, thanks to Kathy Manning and Randall Kaplan, to go to Israel when I was mayor. And I went, and it was a life-changing experience. And I just want to say, because I've been a mayor before, that we ought to celebrate the release of the hostages and the reunification with their family. We ought to make sure that we infuse aid into Gaza because those folks have suffered enough. And we need to understand that Hamas has to be stopped cold, or they will be back. Now, I'm going to get into bold leadership. That's part of bold leadership, making a statement that you know people care about. I was a leader when I was on city council. One of the biggest things that I did during my two years of mayor is I said, "We can't be the third-largest city in the state of North Carolina without a first-class performing arts center, and it has to be downtown." And the Tanger Center is there today. We bought the property while I was still mayor. I haven't been in public office for 12 years, but I can tell you I'll stack my institutional knowledge of local government up against anyone. I was on city council for 16 years before I was mayor for two. two. The last 12 years, I've been the head of Tribic, which is the most comprehensive real estate and economic development group in this area, and I know how this council's supposed to operate, and I plan on leading from day one.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, we'll come back to you. This will be the same question for both of you, but Mr. Perkins, you'll start on this one. Each year, the city council provides money for nonprofits as part of their budget. Audits of nonprofits making over $500,000 are required before and after, but there is no city report online to see the progress and/or if the received dollars were properly used. How can we make that transparency a requirement?
Well, you know, I think that's leadership again, because we're all talking about housing. We're talking about police. We're talking about economic development. We're talking about infrastructure. We're talking about planning. But the foundation for getting those things done has to be transparency, accountability, and communication. And I think our council can improve on all three of those areas. Now, transparency, if you're spending public money, you got to be open to the public about how that money is spent, period. You've got to be accountable for how that money is spent. And to your point, you have to communicate that. So I think there ought to be, and I would certainly propose, a common area where all of the nonprofits are listed, and they are held accountable not only for the dollars that they spend, but for the results that they get for the constituents. I think we've got way too much looseness in that regard, and if it's public money, it's got to be tightened up. Now, we've got, the city has very narrow charter authority, and we've gotten away from some of that. And we've got an $832 million budget and 3,500 employees, and somehow, we're going to have to look at this organization and create some efficiencies, because the taxpayer just can't stand it anymore on their property taxes. We've gone up enough.
Ms. Abuzeater, well, I'll repeat the question for you.
Thank you.
Each year, the city council provides money for nonprofits as part of their budget. Audits of nonprofits making over $500,000 are required before and after, but there is no city report online to see the progress and/or if the dollars received were properly used. How can we make that transparency a requirement? You have two minutes.
It should be online, and I will make sure it's online. I honestly did not know. Now, we get the annual reports, and the nonprofits are vetted and researched, and we depend on the experts on our staff, but we have dashboards on the city website. And on the dashboards, for instance, we can see how many permits have been done. We can see how many buildings are going up. We can see all of that. So we need a dashboard for the same thing on the nonprofits. Now, I will say this. We have cut out hundreds of thousands of dollars that we used to give to nonprofits. We have done that because we know that things are tight. We know that things need efficiency, and I'm very proud of our city manager, who just recently cut $12 million out of the budget, so we would not need to raise taxes. So I am very proud of that. And, you know, we do have and have had some duplication in some departments, and we directed him, you know, find the duplications. He's already done that. He split apart a couple of departments because they were all doing the same thing, and he has streamlined it and made it better. So things like that must be done, but we need to be able to continuously watch that. But I am proud of what our city manager and our city staff do, because with the challenges they have every single day, they are doing an amazing job, and they never get the credit for that. So I truly believe we can look at all of the nonprofits, but I'll be honest with you, there are not that many that we give the huge bucks to. There just aren't. We quit giving to some of the smaller ones, and then we quit giving to ones that were less than $5,000, $10,000. The county has taken over much of that, giving to a lot of nonprofits. Yes, we do give to certain ones, and they are to be vetted, and they always submit their financial statements, which are usually in the office.
Thank you. Ms. Abuzeater, we'll come right back to you with the next question. Greensboro just invested $186 million in its water system. With 52% of the 2025 city budget allocated to infrastructure, what do you see as the next biggest priority in our infrastructure?
In our infrastructure, it's still water. It's still water, 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 because we need the water for the businesses that are coming. We need the water for the buildings that are going to be built. We need the water for the housing that is going to be built. And also, we are having to spend millions of dollars to make sure we can get the PFOS and the PFAS out of our water, because we have got to do that. So we are spending even more. Some people say, "Well, why does your budget go up?" It's things like that that are going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars for us to be in compliance, and we have to do that. We have to make sure the water in our community is safe. Now, for a lot of the expenses, and I still say water is one of the most important things we have, we have to make sure that the underground piping is well-maintained and structurally sound. I think you know, you've seen all of everything going on downtown and all of the disruption and all of the digging. The pipes in our city in many areas are over 100 years old. I will never forget when Mr. Drew came to city council and brought us one of those pipes. You would not have believed it. And we decided then and there, we know it's going to cost a lot of money. We know it's going to cost taxpayer money, but we have to make sure these are replaced, so we don't have all of those disruptions when water mains burst, when the, in the winter, when they freeze and burst. We've got to take care of this infrastructure. You know, also important is our transportation, which we are doing a lot of things along there, but when you go back to it, you need the water for the businesses. You need to be able to send the water and the sewer to these businesses, because they are the ones that are going to keep Greensboro growing, and they are the ones that are going to help our small businesses survive. Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, the same question, which I'll repeat. Greensboro just invested $186 million in its water system. With 52% of the 2025 city budget allocated to infrastructure, what do you see as the next biggest priority in our infrastructure?
Well, anybody who is mayor of the city of Greensboro needs to understand that the most important challenge that we're going to have in the next five years is we don't have enough sewer capacity. We got water interconnects with High Point, Riesville, Burlington, and the Randomman Lake, but we don't have enough capacity at the Osborne Treatment Plant to add the growth that we're anticipating. And I met with a consultant, and when I asked him, I said, "When is this going to be a problem?" And he said, "Five years." I about fell off my chair, because I thought it was 15 to 20. Five years, when you're talking about extra sewer capacity, is the blink of the eye. This new city council has to hit that head-on, and we cannot do it ourselves. We have to partner as a region, and it's a pretty simple solution. Well, it's a complex solution, but it's a simple sort of program. Sewer flows downhill, so we've got to go south of Randomman Lake, down toward Ramseur and Ashboro, and retrofit one of those plants, and then divert 10 million gallons a day out of the Osborne Plant, pump it down there, so we can continue the trajectory of growth that we're on right now.
Mr. Perkins, we'll come back to you in rotation of the questions being asked. This question is, Greensboro's downtown Center City Park was built in 2006 to create a lively downtown gathering place for all residents. The project cost $12 million. Now, it's a public safety problem, unsafe and scary, with unhoused living and sleeping in the park. How do we correct the problem and get back to the park's intended purpose?
Well, I would beg to disagree with the comment that it is unsafe. And I can tell you why. I work a block from that park, and I live two blocks from that park, and I go by that park just about every day. And I think it's, the park is managed by a joint venture between the city and a nonprofit, and so I think you can manage the park better. But one of the things that I think we're missing in downtown Greensboro is I think we're missing a restroom down there, because when I take my walks around downtown Greensboro, and I got to go to the bathroom, I'm in the same shape that a homeless person is, and that's a real problem. And as a community, we need to fix that. Now, Center City Park was designed by one of the foremost park architects in the country. Boston, I think, has a park that was modeled after where we are, and it's well-maintained. But I think the key to making a place like downtown Greensboro feel safe is activation. We've got to have more residential units in our downtown. We've got to have more events. We've got to bring the whole community together in our downtown, because when you've got hundreds of people in your downtown, all people from all over the community, then people feel safe. People feel safe. So we can't arrest our way out of homelessness. We've got a, we're a compassionate crowd here in Greensboro. So I really like the idea that Tammy Thurm has come up with and sponsoring, and thank you, Tammy, for your leadership on that, and I've been briefed on that, and I will support it 100%.
Ms. Abuzeater, the same question, which I'll repeat. Greensboro's downtown Center City Park was built in 2006 to create a lively downtown gathering place for all residents. The project cost was $12 million, and now it's a public safety problem, unsafe and scary, with unhoused living and sleeping in the park. How do we correct the problem and get back to the park's intended purpose?
You know, I'm going to agree with my opponent on one comment, and that is that it is safe downtown and it is safe in Center City Park, but I'm going to tell you what we did to make it that way. So several years ago, and especially during COVID and after COVID, there were a lot of people who became homeless. There's no question about it. Now, social services is a county responsibility. However, the people are in Greensboro, and I also feel that we must do our utmost to make sure they are housed and make sure that they are fed and make sure that when they are struggling, we don't turn them away. So what Greensboro did was several things. You know, we've talked about the permanent supportive housing. We've talked about the Interactive Resource Center, which had some major issues, but it's really doing well now, and people can go there and take a shower and get their mail. And what we had was a huge population, so, and many of them were experiencing mental health challenges or drug challenges. So Greensboro has the behavioral health team through the police department, but social workers go out. It is not an adversarial way to do things. Downtown Greensboro Incorporated has ambassadors who speak to the homeless population. We want to get them out, and we have not had the tents in Center City Park. We have not had people sleeping on the sidewalks in Center City Park for a long time. And officers that are downtown, when they see someone, they either call an ambassador or the B-Hart team, and someone goes down there, "What can we do to get you out of homelessness that you are in now? We want you to be housed. We want you to be dry. We want you to be warm. What can we do?" And it is working, and when this permanent supportive housing opens up, a lot more people will be taken care of. Thank you.
Ms. Abuzeater, we'll come back to you for the final question. You'll start on this one. You both have served the city for quite some time, Mary Kay for 14 years and Robbie for 21 years. In that time, what's your biggest regret or idea that you've been unable to champion, and why didn't it happen?
I think we can go back to the homeless issue. It is happening now, but we've all been very, very frustrated for many, many years. Beyond that, you know, I pretty much addressed that part. So I would have loved to see more of our community come together. Sometimes, and I have tried with certain organizations to do this, but sometimes we have so many organizations and so many people willing to help, and everyone is working in a silo. I have tried to help bring groups together and people together in order so we can all work on one task, because too many times, we have amazing people in this community, and there is duplication. Of course, that is not my job to tell organizations what to do or how they run their organization, not at all, but I do think that we can kind of bring people together and get everyone on the same page. I've had that idea for homelessness. I've had that idea for public safety. You know, maybe we need to go back to where we can have, be like vendor fairs, and everybody who works on this issue, come and show us and show the community what you can do to help them. It can only make Greensboro better, because that way, everybody is in the same area. Everybody is addressing one issue, no matter what it is, and that way, the community can see that we are united as one. We all care about the same things, and we can all work together to do the same things. You know, we have our faith communities that are doing amazing work. We have our businesses that are doing amazing work and volunteering in the community. So if we pick one thing, the city council and the city can help bring all of that together and make Greensboro the best it can be. That is my goal.
Mr. Perkins, the same question. You both have served the city for quite some time, Mary Kay for 14 years, and Robbie, you have for 21 years. What's your biggest regret or idea that you've been unable to champion, and why didn't it happen?
You know, I've only served 18 years on our city council, and if I'm elected mayor, it'll be 22. The biggest thing that I regret is not being able to continue the momentum from the Tanger Center to make our downtown what it should be. I've studied downtowns all over the southeast. I've been to Chattanooga. I've been to Huntsville. I've been to Charleston. I've been to Greenville. I've been to Spartanburg. I've been to Roanoke. We are not competitive with any of those cities today. And so the time between 2013 and now, we're okay, but okay doesn't cut it when you're competing for talent from all over the world. When Contour recruits someone in here, they're looking for something to do when they're not getting paid. When Cone Health recruits somebody in here, they're looking to have a fun time. The downtown is the heart and soul of our community. Now, there is a plan today that Ignite 35 that talks about four elements to do downtown, but I would contend that we've got something special in our downtown that's very rare, and that's Elm Street. Elm Street is the main street. That, you want Elm Street to be the main street like in Disney World. That's where you've got to make it perfect. We've got the bones on Elm Street, and we need to put the pedal to the metal, take the quick wins on Elm Street, and then go to these other areas. If we do that, then number one, it's going to create energy. Number two, enthusiasm. It'll bring our whole community together, and if we can put some residential in our downtown, we'll be up there with the others.
Please join me in thanking both of our mayoral candidates. All right, now joining us will be Denise Roth and Richard Beard. Will they come forward, please? Thank you both for joining us. Same format. We'll ask one question. You both will have two minutes to respond. We'll alternate the order in which the candidates go first. Ms. Roth, you'll be first on the first question. That question is, what is your new big idea to combat crime and make the city safe? You have two minutes.
Wow, that is a very big question.
Make sure you're pulling the mic close to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry. Hopefully that helps. So in terms of combating crime and making the city safe, I think it's for people to feel prosperous in their communities and broadly as both, as well as their neighborhoods. And so what does that look like? In our community, we have aspects of our community that have simply been under-invested. We haven't seen the job levels in terms of income. We haven't seen the increase in housing stock. We haven't seen the investment overall. We haven't seen the investment overall. And so, you know, I had a forum the other night, and in something I said that any CEO looking at an organization would say, what part of our organization is underperforming in ensuring that they put the investment in there? I think the same is true for us as a community. We are on the precipice of major investment and opportunity from job creation, as well as industry development, as well as career path engagement. And so we want to see our communities feel safe. We want it to be prosperous. We want people to be focused on what their future looks like. We have to ensure that we're investing in and thinking about our community on a broad basis. So I think that really focusing around the areas that are under-investment and under-invested in bringing together resources and opportunities and concepts will make us all have and feel privileged and proud of our community across the board.
Mr. Beard, the same question, which I'll repeat. What is your new big idea to combat crime and make the city safe? You have two minutes.
Thank you for the question. You know, with the, with the opportunities that we have coming, it's gonna be important that we make our community very attractive for people to move here and live here. It increases our tax base. It helps all of us pay the bills, quite frankly. And, and that's gonna mean that we need to have a safe city, and we need to make public safety a priority. I do agree with Denise that there are pockets in the community that we have to do some work on when it comes to poverty and some of the issues that drive crime. But I took a police ride-along about four or five weeks ago, and I did it on a Friday night, and I did it from 8:00 PM until 3:00 AM. And I saw a lot, especially from 1:30 till 3:00 AM. You know, I also had a lot of conversation with the police, and I asked them, I said, what do you need? You know, do you need equipment? And they said, we don't need equipment. We need bodies and cars. We need more police out on the streets. And we've got to certainly back them. We've got to support them. They've gotta be able to do their job. They've gotta do their job properly so they have respect and trust from everyone in the community, but we've gotta give them a chance. That weekend downtown, I asked how many police worked downtown, and they said six. And two of them were out of town, so they were down to four, and they used to be 14. And I think that's a, a perception of downtown not being safe is because of the lack of presence down there. And I think that we need to certainly have presence throughout the community to be able to make our city not only look safe, but feel safe.
All right, Mr. Beard, we'll come back to you. You'll be first on this question. There happens to be a high degree of opposition to infill development in certain districts in Greensboro. As an at-large candidate and with the city's current need for housing, how would you address this with your constituents? You have two minutes.
Thank you for that. I have a background in, in commercial real estate and also on the brokerage side. Some people may remember me as the broker that was the third, third time as the charm. It was the Hobson Friendly site, which was very controversial in that neighborhood. And I was working for Halpern Development that was successful in the rezoning. And a lot of the argument was, was the density. Fast forward to today, Roy Carroll owns the property, and I certainly support his plan. It's a good plan, but it's a whole lot more diver, a whole lot, a whole lot more dense than what Halpern Development had on the table. It's gonna be important that we figure out infill development. It needs to be spread throughout the community and not just in certain pockets. For us to, I often say, for us to grow up, we have to go up because we can't expand anymore because of annexation. And if we're not extending our water and sewer to outer areas of, of the county, and we do require people that tap into our water and sewer, they have to annex and pay taxes, and I'd certainly support that. But we need to find pockets in the community that can support infill development, and we've gotta do it smart, but we've gotta support it for us to be able to accomplish our road to 10,000 housing units. So it's certainly gonna be a part of the conversation, and it will be controversial at times. We've gotta figure out a, a good plan and a smart way to do it throughout the community.
Ms. Roth, same question, which I'll repeat. There happens to be a high degree of opposition to infill development in certain districts in Greensboro. As an at-large candidate and with the city's current need for housing, how would you address this with your constituents? You have two minutes.
I think this is a very fair question, and the reality is, is that as we've gone through these candidates' forums, we're hearing the same things in terms of people being concerned about their communities and their neighborhoods staying intact and wanting to understand what is this growth that we are facing and how will it be managed? At the end of the day, growth is coming. It's very much coming, and we are going to need the density in terms of meeting the need, both of our current need as well as the need that's on the horizon. But we have to meet it in a way that is strategic and that is thoughtful. We need to protect our neighborhoods. We have strong neighborhoods and a lot that is worth protecting. And we also need to invite in that growth. I think there's some key principles. I think we need to be transparent in what we're going to do as a council, so really articulate what we are trying to invite in, whatever those goals look like. And when I say that, I mean that, you know, there's certain parts of our community that doesn't have affordable housing, for example, that will need it in order, or attainable housing, as we think about some of the jobs that are coming online. We have to be consistent in how we are applying our approach. And we have to be, and that's what will build trust with us in the community. And then we have to have a clear vision and direction that we're setting. At the end of the day, as I said, the growth is happening. It's on us, and it's a matter of how we're going to really manage it and see our way through it. We have to have a clear strategic plan that says, here's where our goals are, here's how we're going to do it, and we have to be consistent with that.
All right, next question. Ms. Roth, we'll come to you first on this one in the rotation. Homelessness is a problem that the city council is trying to address with the purchase of 30 pop-up and collapsible temporary housing units known as pallet homes. The first winter 2022 housed 60 residents. Seventeen found permanent housing. In 2024, the council rented two RV sleeper trailers with showers and toilets, increasing the total to 87 beds, and began summer use. What is your opinion of this program? And are you in agreement to continue with this, or do you have other ideas? You have two minutes.
First of all, I, I think it's always important to be innovative and creative in meeting solutions. So full stop, I think that council, looking at strategies and exploring them and being supportive of the, of the city manager and staff and exploring them is important. I would like to see us have a consistent strategy of how we're going to meet the needs of our homeless neighbors today, full-time. And I think that the, it was referenced earlier, the efforts that Councilwoman Thurm is leading is very important, right? It's looking ahead. It's understanding that we have a need and that we're going to meet that, and we're, and we have to start somewhere. And so we're starting. In the meantime, there are resources in this community. There are homes in this community that are empty or in rehab state. We really need to be thinking about housing first, putting people in homes, bringing supports to them, and moving forward. And our, our homeless challenge is not as extensive as some of our other communities that we see across the country. I do think it's necessary, and it's a challenge enough that we really should dig in. Like, and, and one of the things I think is important when we set up the, when the new council takes seat, that we immediately establish a strategic direction that says that we're going to tackle these top five issues immediately. And I would put homeless challenges and, and housing the homeless and the homeless insecure right at the top of that.
All right, Mr. Beard, same question, which I'll repeat. Homelessness is a problem that the city council is trying to address with the purchase of 30 pop-up and collapsible temporary housing units known as pallet homes. The first winter 2022 housed 60 residents. Seventeen found permanent housing. In 2024, the council rented two RV sleeper trailers with showers and toilets, increasing the total to 87 beds, and began summer use. What is your opinion of this program? And are you in agreement to continue with this, or do you have other ideas? You have two minutes, and remember to be close to the mic.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, the homeless issue is certainly a challenge for our community. I think in a lot of ways, we have failed our attempts. The pallet homes that are up right now are over on 29th and 16th Street that formerly housed the Regent Inn that was purchased by the city about three years ago, and we're on our, about our third iteration of a developer to come in and develop that product to take care of this, help take care of this issue. So I'm a little frustrated when it comes to responsiveness, transparency, and accountability, certainly with that project, and that's certainly cost a lot of money and time. But I agree with Denise, there are areas that are vacant properties. One in particular that I've been watching the last couple of weeks is right behind the McDonald's over on Summit Avenue and Maple Street, and this is right there where some of the supportive services are in DSS. There's a whole block of vacant units that are in disrepair, and not much is happening there. I don't know who owns the property. I think it's time for us to take a look at it. That's an opportunity for the city to be able to permanently house some of the people that are using the temporary shelters that we're having to use. I'm thrilled with the success of 17 people finding permanent homes, so there has been success with it, but we need a permanent solution rather than move these temporary units from one side of town to the other because they can't stay up year-round.
All right, for both of the candidates, final question. Mr. Beard, we'll come to you first in the rotation on this one. The city manager announced in February the Road to 10,000 Initiative, a plan to add 10,000 new housing units by 2030 to address our critical housing shortage. Recently, that number was updated to 40,000. In the last seven months, 1,817 new homes are completed or under construction. How can we achieve this new goal in five years at this rate?
Well, the road to 10,000 was ambitious, and the road to 20,000 and 30,000 is certainly ambition, but critically needed because not only did we have a housing crisis before we announced 20,000 jobs, or especially the 14,000 jobs with Jet Zero, we were already short on, on attainable product throughout the city. I certainly support this. You know, we're gonna have to be bold and aggressive and, and ways that we can make that happen in a short timeframe of five years. That's gonna require some, you know, expedited permitting. It's gonna have to be a tremendous coordination between the developers and the city so we can, you know, time is money, and so we can get these units built. I'm very eager to see that happen in a very successful way in Greensboro because this economic opportunity that we have, I think, is, is the best in my lifetime, and I would compare this, this transformation in our economic development similar to when the Coens came here with textiles. I mean, it's a complete shift, and it's gonna be with us for the next 75 to 100 years. So it's, I want these people living in Greensboro because not only are they, when they live in Greensboro, they're building tax base and paying taxes. And we've got a lot of catching up to do, and let's make this community a very livable and attractive place so we can get as many people living here responsibly and controlled, but so they'll be paying taxes and paying for the amenities that they're gonna use, whether they live in Randolph and Rockingham County. They're gonna come in and use our Coliseum and our Tanger and other places that are on the burden, it's solely on our shoulders as Greensboro City taxpayers. So I fully support it, and I'm gonna do everything to make sure that we're in a way to get that done.
Ms. Roth, same question, which I'll repeat. The city manager announced in February the Road to 10,000 Initiative, a plan to add 10,000 new housing units by 2030 to address our critical housing shortage. Recently, that number was updated to 40,000. In the last seven months, 1,817 new homes are completed or under construction. How can we achieve this new goal in five years at this rate?
Thank you for the question. And I agree with my colleague, it's important for us to get started because there is quite a bit to be done. Since I left my role with the administration, I worked for President Obama. I've had a chance to work across the country with cities that are working on a number of challenges similar to ours. And I advise other cities currently that have adopted similar approaches and strategies. The real strength in these, these efforts is in part, it tells us and it signals to the community and staff, there is a need that we need to focus on. The next layer is where we really need to head now, is really identifying what are the priorities for where these homes are to go? What do we want to incentivize with our development partners and with our staff in terms of how we prioritize our resources and time to get this working? I love to see us have staff really rallying around, working at the same table to get permits approved, to work through challenges that are happening. I mean, the idea that we want to go from where we are today to really tackle such a big need, which again is the need that we have today, not the need that we're going to have 10 or 15 years from now, we really have to be strategic about how we do it. So we need to move beyond the goal, and we need to outline what are the next steps of how we actually get there? What are the different pieces that we can bring to the table to make, help us get there faster and help us get in, get there in a way that's strategic? I will give you a small, and I, I pointed to it earlier. Jobs are going to come up across this community. Our transportation and transit looks different across the community. We need housing to be in places where people are going to live in the future, not today. Where, and, and I know that there is tables and efforts coming together with the private sector to plan for this, but that next level after you set the goal is really the critical part of where the work happens. I'm a co-developer in a project that benefited from a similar concept in another city, and what it's bringing together is just that focus. Thank you.
Please join me in thanking these two candidates for the at-large seat. They will now step down from the stage, and we'll have the Honorable Jamila Pender and Hugh Holston. Ms. Pender, you'll be the first respondent on the first question. We have learned this year that every district in our city has poverty, underprivileged residents, and homelessness. District 2 and District 1 by proximity will have a new $75 million Windsor Chavis Recreation Center with extended services for Medicare, food stamps, and social services, while District 3, 4, and 5 have not seen updates in their 1970s-built recreation centers. What are your thoughts on enacting a District 3, 4, and 5 plan to equalize improvements in services to those recreation centers? You have two minutes.
Would I say equalize or look at equity? And I say that because when you look-
Make, make sure you get the mic close. Thank you.
Is this better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I wouldn't say equalize, but I would look at it in terms of equity. And so when you're looking at what is needed across our city, yes, in District 1 and 2, where there has not been as much disinvestment, and so what the community needs, again, being driven by community, some of those things such as housing, addressing food security, addressing healthcare, those are things that we're in high need in that area. But then when we look at across the entire city, so District 3, 4, and 5, some of those needs look very different. Not to say they're not the same, but they're very different. So I would say, what is a way that we can come up with a process that can be able to meet the needs of individuals in District 3, 4, and 5? And that's gonna look very different than what you see what's being built in District 1 and 2. So I would look at the process, again, look at what are those needs are, and then how can we reimagine? Because again, when we're looking at what the future looks like and how we look at service delivery, be it healthcare, be it food, be it recreation, that's gonna look very different. And so I like to use the lens of equity and not equality.
Mr. Holston, same question, which I'll repeat. We have learned this year that every district in our city has poverty and underprivileged residents and homelessness. District 2 and District 1 by proximity will have a new- District two and district one by proximity will have a new $75 million Windsor Chavis Recreation Center with extended services for Medicare, food stamps and social services. While district three, four and five have not seen updates in their 1970s-built recreation centers, what are your thoughts on enacting a district three, four and five plan to equalize improvements in services to those recreation centers? You have two minutes.
Thank you so very much for the question. Uh, I have said often that, uh, every district in Greensboro needs to look like all of Greensboro and districts one and two with the Windsor Chavis No-Co Center giving the $75 million, that is awesome. The other districts also deserve the very same types of investment. But speaking to what, uh, Councilwoman Pender just, just mentioned, there is an equity component to the conversation and we need to make sure that we're looking and ensuring that those communities, one and two, have received the same type of investment, the same type of equity investment over the years. So the analysis comes in, we have a look at that and we see exactly where we need to go. The numbers and the data will tell us where to go. So I'm comfortable and I'm confident that by looking at the equity conversation, that is, we want those communities who have been underserved and districts one and two have historically been underserved, we want to make sure that they get that extra added lift. And then absolutely, we need to be on the same plane and all of our residents and all of our districts in Greensboro need to enjoy the benefits of the parks and recreations and other amenities.
Mr. Holston, in the rotation, we'll come back to you as the first respondent to the second question, which is, as we attract more young professionals to fill our booming job market, home and rental costs relative to per capita income become increasingly important. Next year is a property reevaluation year. What are your thoughts on creating a revenue-neutral budget to lessen the financial impact on your constituents? Two minutes.
Revenue-neutral, absolutely. But I will say with one caveat, that there are going to be natural increases in generic costs and we need to make sure we factor those in. To make a generic statement of revenue-neutral only, and when we know that the cost of living, the general cost of living is going up, social security has a cost of living, a COLA, there are other cost of livings out there. So revenue nu- neutral plus those necessary needed items. Uh, naturally, when, when the revaluation comes in, there potentially, if the rate that we're currently charging, the 67.25, if we leave it as it is, there's going to be a huge windfall. I am in favor of immediately, whatever that revaluation is, lowering that tax rate so that we bring in the same $828 million. And then we fight like the dickens to make sure that those necessary things we need, we can't forget the necessary things, are those things that we include in the budget. But revenue-neutral first, then fight for any increases.
Ms. Pender, the same question, which I'll repeat. As we attract more young professionals to fill our booming job market, home and rental costs relative to per capita income become increasingly important. Next year is a property reevaluation year. What are your thoughts on creating a revenue-neutral budget to lessen the financial impact on your constituents? Two minutes.
I'm going to be honest with you, I am still learning all of this. I'm just going to be real with you, but what I do commit to do is to look at other ways and how we can, um, find a middle ground, so to speak, because you're right, the cost of living is outpacing what we have bringing in, but we also have to look at, um, how we can be intentional about doing this and being mindful of, yes, we want to be able to get to revenue-neutral, but is that real, is it possible? And if it is possible, what unintended harm would it cause as we do this? So again, it goes back to, as we get to this point, what are we willing to give up in order to be able to have this? And the more we have the conversations to be able to talk about it, I think it helps us develop the process and how to be able to address this. So this is very new for me in terms of the budget in this regard, but I do commit to continue to learn and find out, um, and I don't want to commit something that I know I can't commit to.
Ms. Pender, we'll come back to you in the rotation. You're next, uh, to answer first. The question is, Greensboro is in a housing crisis. Council does not build housing but is responsible for repair and teardown, which has a significant backlog. What can council do to expedite or improve this process to create more housing from inventory that already exists? Two minutes and make sure you're speaking directly into the microphone.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Um, I just want to make sure I understand the question. So how can we repair, um, or rehab the housing that we already have within our housing stock? And so, is that correct?
The, the question is specifically, what can council do to expedite or improve the process and create more housing from inventory that already exists?
I think it starts, it starts with what is the inventory? Many times we like to set goals, but don't look at the process that we use or have in place to be able to accomplish those goals. And so first is, what are we working with and what do we have? And then being able to have almost like a risk stratification where we say, okay, this is at level one, two, three and four and five, and this is how much investment and what costs for us to be able to do that. Now, again, from a city standpoint, we do not have all the resources and funds to be able to do that. So we are going to have to partner with others to be able to make sure that we can ma- meet that need. So first is identifying what is the need, what do we need to do and how do we need to do it? Being able to then be able to rate that in terms of one, two, three and four, and then look at who around us can be able to help us do that because it's not just based off of municipalities from a standalone standpoint, but it's going to take all of us to be able to, um, be able to get the housing where it needs to be.
Mr. Holston, same question, which I'll repeat. Greensboro is in a housing crisis. Council does not build housing, but is responsible for repair and teardown, which has a significant backlog. What can council do to expedite or improve this process to create more housing from inventory that already exists? Two minutes.
Yeah, this is a question regarding what are we doing with those, uh, infill properties that we have across this city? Uh, some of those are properly owned, some of those are absentee landlords who really have nothing to do with Greensboro, they just own property here. Uh, for sure, we need to make sure that the city of Greensboro, and we keep a listing of those, of those infill properties. And what we need to do is stop worrying about trying to sell those properties that are in disrepair, but instead look at reducing the price down to a dollar, for instance, and then donate that property to a developer who is then going to improve that property and then someone's going to live on it and now we have a tax base that's, that's going to grow even stronger. Uh, it's important that we focus on those infill properties, that, that, that's all we have there. And then also make sure that we are, uh, making the ease of doing business in Greensboro, the ease of doing the rehab, the, the ease of doing the construction even better. Streamlining those processes that we have in planning and zoning and in engineering and ensuring that, um, developers want to do business with us. Because when a developer is looking at the infill property or even just a, a, uh, any other property, we, we must realize that that is an investment by that developer. They're not doing it for the fun of it, they're not doing it for willy-nilly purposes, they're doing it as an investment. And if we in Greensboro can make their investment a little bit easier, they're probably going to choose Greensboro and they're going to take care of our infill properties, properties before they take care of infill properties in Charlotte or Raleigh or other places.
Mr. Holston, we'll come back to you for the final question. You'll answer first. The city manager announced in February, "The Road to 10,000 Initiative," a plan to build 10,000 new housing units by 2030 to address our critical housing shortage. Recently, that number was updated to 40,000. In the last seven months, 1,817 new homes are completed or under construction. How can we achieve this new goal in five years at this rate? Two minutes.
It's very doable. The, the road to, to 10,000 is very doable if we, uh, put our hearts into it, if we put our passion into it. Again, I talked earlier about that, the ease of doing business. If we make it easier to do business here, the developers who are in Raleigh and Charlotte will run to us because they can, they can get out, get in the ground, they can get up and they can sell it more quickly and their return, their investment is that much quicker. And let me tell you, just today, uh, the Greensboro Housing Coalition, where I serve as the CEO, we held our 2025 Housing Summit and the featured speaker at that housing summit was Mr. Patrick Bowen. If you recognize the name Patrick Bowen, he's the, the man who's given us that $32,000 number, a 32,000 home number. Well, I'll be very honest with you, it's just as a side note, I don't think it's 32,000 anymore because that 32,000 was before we announced Jet Zero. So it's now 48, 50,000 new properties that we need. I'm a firm believer that we can do it by simply marketing Greensboro just a little bit better, having the, the ease of business in Greensboro and ensuring that, uh, residents want to live here. Mr. Bowen shared some numbers today. That is, in by the year 2029, we'll have 8% more seniors, that is over 55. We'll have 1.9% less of the, of the young population. And that 50% of the folks who work in Guilford County don't live in Guilford County. What we're talking about is an opportunity with, I'll start with the young folk, those are the students. We have the opportunity to keep more of them here with entrepreneurship, buying houses. The seniors, we need more senior housing, staying here in Greensboro. And then let's capture those residents who are traveling through just for jobs and get housing for them also. I'm a firm believer that the road to 10,000 is possible.
Ms. Holston, the same question, which I'll repeat now. The city manager announced in February, "The Road to 10,000 Initiative," a plan to add 10,000 new housing units by 2030 to address our critical housing shortage. Recently, that number was updated to 40,000. In the last seven months, 1,817 new homes are completed or under construction. How can we achieve this new goal in five years at this rate? Two minutes.
Well, I know about the road to 10,000. And the 40,000 I thought was the number that was what we needed. Um, and so the 10,000 is a start to get us there, but much of what Mr. Holston has said, I would echo, um, his sentiments. Um, but it goes back to the first, the question that was before this question is, what do we currently also have? We have a lot of property here that we can preserve, that we can rehab, that will help us get closer to that road to 10,000, but we also have to look at our processes and our systems that we have in place. So how easy is it for us to be able to help? How easy is our process for individuals who are interested in being able to help develop some of the property, be it new or old? Um, how can we look at some of those processes and change some of those things? Um, in addition to that, when we're looking at homes, the, the road to 10,000, that road to 10,000 is not just for new homes. So again, looking at what we have, because we can get the new, but the new is also going to become old. And so if we do not have a sustainability plan for what we are currently trying to achieve, we're going to end up in the same situation where we're here now. So again, looking at the process that we already have in place, how do we make it easier for us to be, for individuals to be able to enter into this market and diversify those individuals? So if it's a community land trust, if it is, um, not just your private equity firms, but if it is also developers, how do we make it accessible for everybody and diversify that, 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 diversify the string for individuals to be able to come in and do that type of investment?
Thank you very much and please join me in thanking these two candidates and all of the candidates that appeared here tonight. And a special word of thanks for your event organizers. Thank you for putting this together this year and thank you all for being a well-behaved audience. Thank you.
I didn't know you told us that you were here. No one said that.